Welcome everyone to the City of Durango City Council where you are meeting February 1st, 2022. It is 5:31 PM. And may we have a roll call please?
Counselor Bosmans?
Present.
Counselor Buell?
Here.
Counselor Yussa?
Here.
Mayor Protim Nosworthy?
Present.
Mayor Baxter?
Present. Do we have a translator to be introduced tonight?
Yes, we do, Mayor. His name is Diego.
Wonderful. Welcome Diego. Please introduce yourself.
Hi everyone. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
So, my name is Diego Pons. I'll be joined here shortly by my colleague Indira Guzman. We're here on behalf of the Community Language Cooperative. So for starters, thanks for having us at your meeting tonight. The organizers of this meeting have made a commitment towards language justice. So this just means that we're here to help create a space so that everyone can participate and engage in the language of their heart, which is simply the language they feel most comfortable in. So we'll use simultaneous interpretation to help create the space here on Zoom in English and in Spanish. And when I finish saying these instructions in English, I'll repeat them in Spanish. At that moment, the interpretation will be turned on. Once the interpretation is turned on, you'll be able to observe a globe icon assist interpretation there in the bottom right hand corner of your screen. Once you see that globe icon, please select it and please select your preferred language. If you happen to be joining tonight's meeting on your cellphone or your tablet here on Zoom, please look for the more button or the three dots button in order to select your preferred language that way. And if you're not fully bilingual, we ask you that you please do select your preferred language so that you can utilize the interpretation in case you are going to need it. However, if you are bilingual, feel free to listen to everyone in their original language. And when you select your language, you can always check the original audio so that you don't have to be hearing both languages at the same time. Thank you. Buenas tardes a todos y a todas. Mi nombre es Diego Pons. Estoy aquí hoy de parte de la Cooperativa de Justicia al Lenguaje. Pronto se unirá mi colega Indira Guzman con nosotros y muchas gracias por invitarnos hoy a su reunión. Los organizadores de esta reunión se han comprometido hoy a servir la justicia al lenguaje. Lo que eso significa es que queremos crear un espacio para que todos puedan participar e involucrarse en el idioma de su corazón. Es simplemente el idioma en que todas las personas se sientan más cómodas. Hoy vamos a utilizar la interpretación simultánea para poder crear ese espacio aquí en Zoom en inglés y en español. Cuando yo termine de decir esto, se va a activar la interpretación. Cuando la interpretación está activada, por favor seleccione ese icono del globo terráqueo para seleccionar su idioma preferido de esa manera. Si usted está haciendo hoy esta reunión en su celular o en su tableta, por favor busque la opción que dice more y decir más por el botón de tres puntos para que pueda seleccionar su idioma preferido de esa manera. Si usted no es completamente bilingüe, le pido que por favor seleccione su idioma preferido para que pueda utilizar la interpretación. Si usted sí es bilingüe, sienta ser libre de escuchar a todos hoy en su idioma original. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pons. We appreciate it. This is the point in time where we ask if there are any actual or perceived conflicts of interest for the city council on today's agenda? And are there? Seeing none, we'll move on. We have a need to go into an executive session today for the purpose of discussing the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of real, personal, or other property interest as permitted in CRS 24-6-402 4A specifically to discuss 402 CR 238 Durango, Colorado, and positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we skip over public participation.
Oh, you're absolutely right. I am just horrible. Thank you.
It's one of those days.
And I even circled it. I don't know. It's a crazy day. So I understand that we have a person in the chambers to do in-person public comment? May we start with them?
Perfect. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. My name is Talen Yaizik, student body co-president at Durango High School. Our address is 2390 Main. I'd like to update you on what has been happening at the high school. Since we were last here, we've started our spring semester. We currently have 1,331 students, which is a healthy number for us. As new students come to Durango High School, DHS Student Council and the DHS ambassadors invite new students every month to our First Friday where we share things that we hope will get them connected and more comfortable with DHS. Durango High School has earned the Advanced Placement Computer Science Female Diversity Award for achieving high female representation in AP Computer Science Principles. Schools honored with the AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award have expanded girls' access in AP Computer Science courses. We're proud of our computer science teachers, Ms. Haller and Mrs. Harmon, for being recognized for their achievement in doing this. One of our modern language faculty, Lane Barnard, who teaches French, received the Early Educator Award from the Colorado Congress of Foreign Language Teachers this year. Durango High School Student Council also presented their Council of Excellence presentation two weeks ago. We're anxiously waiting to hear whether or not we will be recognized as a National Gold Council of Excellence for 2021. Thanks to all of you who stopped by and visited with us. Looking forward to this month is Black History Month, and our Black Student Alliance is putting on a month-long series of events in awareness for building activities to celebrate. The annual 2022 Skills USA Colorado Region Eight Championships will be hosted by Skills USA Durango this Friday at the Fairgrounds. Opening ceremonies to take place at the DHS auditorium Friday morning. Please feel free to stop by and see what our skills program is up to in this competition. 2023 and 2022 student leadership elections are just around the corner next week. Next week, Ms. Phillips, along with Ms. Lee from the county, will be presenting campaigning strategy and advice to all our class officer candidates. Thanks, Ms. Phillips. DHS choirs are preparing the music for their Carnegie Hall concert in New York City on March 6th. That's all I have for this month. I'd be happy to answer any questions or clarify anything I talked about.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate your participation.
Of course. Thank you for having me.
You're welcome. So the public participation portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to provide three minutes of comments or ask questions regarding items that are not scheduled for a hearing or public testimony or that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. City council will not respond to questions from the dais. Citizens should address their comments directly to the city council. So we do have at least two hands raised in the virtual room for public participation. Would you let one of them in, please, Shannon?
We have Ted Wright.
Thank you. Welcome Ted.
Thank you. Ted Wright, 2701 West Second Avenue, Durango. Good evening, councilors. If you're open to hear ideas, a long-term lease of the River City Hall to DFPD may be the best decision for siding of a downtown fire station. I ask you to consider that. Well, that said, I did watch the joint session with city and county on the siding of a homeless camp. Siding solutions for the homeless camp have directly involved a larger public voice. The complete opposite of that can be said for the siding of a downtown fire station. By the Fire Services Contract, DFPD can only justify spending millions of dollars of the money the city has been paying to DFPD under that contract if it is for an appropriate site for a downtown fire station. Determination of what is appropriate cannot be done unilaterally by DFPD. That offends the common sense and good faith of the services contract. DFPD has taken control of planning by effectively forcing the city to adapt it to its purchase of the 9R property by moving the city police there. DFPD is justifying the downtown fire station land use of the 9R property by its purchase alone and then leveraging that purchase into a public safety campus. Spin first, ask questions later. How come the plans of the DFPD website have PD all over them? How far from public view has that move taken us? The public declaration by council has always been no plan, no review, no objection, so no public engagement. Now, after the purchase on the DFPD website, there are plans for the public safety campus of the 9R property, all done with no engagement of the larger public voice. The concept of equal dignity came to mind when I was listening to the city council joint session on the siding challenges for the homeless camp. At one point, Marsh Porter Norton referred to it as a dignity campus. It meant something to hear it said that way. At that joint session, there were collected from the general public and as well as others, 18 different sites. Yes, one of the suggested sites for locating the homeless camp was the 9R property. But what is notable is that we have siding issues for the public safety campus and the dignity campus at the same time. But the public has voice and choice in the homeless camp, but not in the downtown fire station. The public can be said to have been represented in the process that yielded the URA plans that included the 9R building and the multimodal plans that included the 9R property. Those plans are revoked by the DFPD plan. Why doesn't the siding of a downtown fire station that would disrupt existing plans have equal dignity with the siding of the homeless camp? Why doesn't determination of an appropriate site under the Fire Services Contract include the public voice? And one more thing. When 9R sold to DFPD on December 17th, we know that 9R had faith in the DFPD, that the historic preservation of the 9R building was in good hands. I believe that faith in 9R was without condition. However, DFPD believed this promise to preserve the 9R building as historic was conditional, not absolute. The condition is that the city yield planning authority to DFPD to move the police department to the 9R building to make whatever public infrastructure changes, parking closures, and transportation adjustments necessary to create the public safety campus. If frustrated by planning involvement from the city, DFPD represented that it would have to sell the 9R building without provision for its historic preservation for the money's sake. Thank you.
Thank you Ted. I believe Ms. Stein was second in line? Ellen, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. So this is just a letter that I've been writing in response to my email exchange with you today. I wanted to, I'm going to share that this change.org petition, the link to that, and I'm going to just try and adapt my comments in the letter to public comment. So I want to let anybody who's listening know that, you know, over a thousand people signed a letter to council asking for public dialogue about the siding of the 9R admin building, or sorry, the siding of DFPD and the 9R admin building, a critical decision for the future of our community. I understand you had a conversation in today's study session, discussion regarding a joint DFPD PD Emergency Operations Center that you spent five minutes on, and to let you know that the study session was published as virtual and in person, and the city's Zoom link only presented the regular meeting as an option to join. So I don't know what that conversation was, and it's quite unfortunate, not to mention lacking transparency. So I would like to know what was discussed and decided on such an important topic in such a brief amount of time? If it was whether or not to conduct a study as to the suitability, financial viability, et cetera, of joining the PD with the DFPD and the 9R admin building? You as council are continuing to ignore the hundreds of business owners represented by bid and local first. I've read the letters sent by both organizations to council and the hundreds, maybe thousands of petition signers that are deeply concerned about and have requested a dialogue about the future use of the 9R admin building and the economic future of our downtown and broader community before any planning process would begin. You are forcing a square peg into a round hole. There is no data supporting relocating the DFPD to the 9R admin building with response times being the most important or any data supporting the viability of an emergency services center, nor most importantly, what the social and economic impact of such a center would be on our downtown. You are starting at the wrong end of any planning exercise, first and foremost, to understand what the city's residents desire. We've outlined these goals in numerous plans, including your own strategic plan, quote, "to work closely with 9R and a private developer to redevelop the 9R admin property." You are also ignoring the URA Midtown Plan, which describes the 9R admin building as an anchor building in this area. The multimodal plan also outlines community connectivity goals and the future use and owner of the 9R admin building is intimately tied to, not to mention quality of life goals outlined in the city's comprehensive plan, all being achieved. I've said this-
Ellen, I appreciate it. You're welcome.
Please listen to citizens.
Thank you. Mr. Hope, I believe, is next in line?
Greg, you should be able to speak now. You have three minutes.
You are on mute though, Greg.
Hi. Hi.
Ellen, you're not on mute.
Oh, sorry.
Maybe try reading, Greg?
Greg, can you speak now? Your mute is off, but we can't hear you.
I'm still seeing him in, yeah, yeah. Ellen, could you go on mute and?
I don't, I, oops.
Thank you. Greg, can you unmute yourself? Ted, you're also unmuted. Hi, Greg, can you hear us?
Very good. Thank you. I've got a new computer and I'm really frustrated because I was pushing the screen like my laptop, or iPad, but I need to use my mouse. Sorry about that.
That's okay. I just want Ted to know that he is off of mute. Please mute yourself, Ted. Thank you, Greg. Go ahead.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. I'm changing what I was going to talk about based on what I've just heard. I tried to listen to the study session agenda today, but there was no link. And I was told that there was no in-person participation until March at city council meetings, so I didn't show up like the high school kid. So I have no idea what happened this afternoon on the agenda documentation or on the item that was the five-minute discussion. I think it was the city manager speaking to you, and I would like to ask what was, because I don't have any way to get this documentation. Couldn't get it online. I couldn't attend the meeting. So what was the proposal or the question that was advanced by the city manager to the council at today's study session? What was the direction unanimous given to him and what was the council's response? That's what I'd like to know right now because when else am I going to find out? So please, would somebody just tell me what happened today?
So Greg, after your public comment is up, I'm going to ask the manager, Madrigal, if we know what happened about the link and then we'll discuss further this topic. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I'd just like to say, I hope that you just, it just happened a couple of hours ago and all you'd need to do is say what anybody in the audience would have heard by just saying before my three minutes are up, you can take a minute right now and do it. So that's what I'm requesting. Thank you.
I understand, but we'll do that after you're finished, though.
Okay, I'm finished.
Okay. City manager, do you know anything about the situation with not being able to access our study session today?
I do not, Mayor. This is the first that I've heard of it. I'm not sure if someone in our city clerk's office, whether it's Amy or Fay, is available right now online that can answer that question in regards to the link.
Hey, Jose, this is Tom.
Yes.
I did use that link on the city's website through Zoom to join the study session, so I'm not sure if it wasn't working for Greg. Why?
I also used the link on the site.
And I also have a text from Chief Bremer, who just said that he worked and the link worked for him. Got, our finance director said they also used the link successfully at 2:15, so I don't know why the link didn't work for Mr. Hope.
And for Ellen also.
And for Ellen.
Okay. So do we know when the media for that, for our study session today will be posted on the website so they could listen to it?
I do not have that right off the top of my head. Usually we turn it around pretty quickly. And I'd just be looking for the clerk's office to confirm.
I will need to go into the agenda part of it and look and see if it's been uploaded, but as far as I can tell, it looks like it has been. So give me a few minutes and if I can go back online in just a few minutes, I'll let you know.
Wonderful. Thank you. So Ellen and Greg and anybody else listening, the media will be available momentarily. Thank you. We're sorry for the confusion. Are there any other public comments? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to item number six, which is executive session. There's a need for city council to convene an executive session for the purposes of discussing the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of real, personal, or other property interest as permitted in CRS 24-6-402 4A specifically to discuss 402 CR 238 Durango, Colorado, and positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, or instructing negotiators as permitted in CRS 24-6-402 4E. State law requires that two-thirds of the quorum present must vote in the affirmative in order to convene an executive session. Do we have a motion?
I'm moved to convene an executive session for the purposes stated.
Second.
Any discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Counselor Yussa?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Nosworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes. Thank you. We'll leave this meeting now and adjourn into our meet in the executive session and then come back to this meeting when we're done. I reconvene this meeting at 6:27 PM. For the record, council met in an executive session for the purposes of discussing the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of real, personal, or other property interest as permitted in CRS 24-6-402 4A specifically to discuss 402 CR 238 Durango, Colorado, and positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, or instructing negotiators as permitted in CRS 24-6-402 4E. No decisions were made. If anyone who participated in the executive session believes the discussion went beyond the proper scope of the executive session, please state your objections now. Seeing none, the next item is number seven, proclamations presentations. We don't have any proclamations tonight, but we do have two presentations. The first one is city operational updates, a water update by Ms. Baker.
Yes, Mayor and council, we do have Allison Baker, our Public Works Director, to give a brief update just to finalize some of the update emails that she was sending out to you earlier in the past couple of weeks, just to kind of put a rap-a-bow on it, if you will, and let you know kind of where we are finally on a couple of those update items. Allison?
Thank you. Jose, I'm Allison Baker, the Public Works Director, and I feel like I've really already kind of dragged council along through this whole process with our updates. I didn't want anybody to be taken by surprise if there were any violations or notifications filed. As it has worked out, our excellent staff at the treatment plant has brought us through it and it looks like we're on the the foreside now. I'll just run through a few little highlights and our lessons learned and more to follow at IAV tomorrow if people are interested. So we had the Florida raw water line break on December 27th. It was in the Timberline Estates area out Florida Road and so we shut off the diversion from the river. Santa Rita pumps were activated on January 3rd. On the 15th, the pumps were turned off, having pumped about 46 million gallons of water into the terminal reservoir during that time from the Animus River. Also on 11/15, the repair clamp was installed. It was a challenge to find the old water line. The mapping was very inadequate. It was from the 1950s and we ended up using some ground penetrating radar to locate it. Fill had been placed on top of it and it was 12 feet deep, so there was a lot of bits and pieces, but did get it installed. The repair clamp was installed. On the 19th, after a few back and forth, we restored flow from the Florida River to terminal reservoir. On January 25th, we confirmed that the combined filter effluent regulatory compliance with turbidity had been met to date. There was a question because we had been reporting it hourly. When we went back and reported every 15-minute period, we were within compliance. So CD-PAG was satisfied with that and starting the 26th, we got approval to move ahead with demonstration scale evaluation of a pre-oxidation process that changes the operation of the plant by adding sodium hyperchlorite at the rapid mixing basin, making the particulate matter drop out of the solution earlier so the filters can take it out. So with that, we're kind of all back to normal. I asked our guys today, so you know, what are our lessons learned? What do we do going forward so we don't have this kind of excitement? Apparently what we're looking at, it came down to basically manganese and iron in the Animus River at a degree that we're not used to treating and it's more significant in winter with cold water and cold weather than it is when we're mixing during the summer with the Florida water. So we're doing more sophisticated manganese testing now on site. We're setting up the lab a little differently, getting event hood, a few other little bits and pieces, so we can do that. We're going to be doing regular certified lab testing of both the Florida and Animus River to keep our characterization of the raw water supply very timely so that if we do have to make abrupt changes for various reasons, that we can accomplish that. We're moving our CIP priority on lining this supply line up to a higher priority. It is a 1950s 14-inch cast iron pipe, so it's very fragile and we want to make, it's nine miles long, so the sooner we can protect it, I think the better we are. We have three functional pumps at Santa Rita Pump Station. One of them is due for replacement this year and keeping up with that obviously is an important component of our ability to respond. And we will continue to work on locating the raw water line more effectively and getting it mapped and current up to date. Are there any questions I can answer?
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
I believe Counselor Bosmans and Mayor Protim Nosworthy have their hand up. I didn't see which one went first. Sorry.
I'll go first. Thank you, Allison. I really appreciate your and all staff's support and work in fixing it in a way. It is nice to see. It's not nice to have an incident like this, but it is nice to see that it tests the system and the infrastructure and it finds all the weak spots to be addressed in the future. On the iron and manganese, is that possible that it came out of the pipes from the pump station? Or is that really- possible that it came out of the pipes from the pump station, or is that really your water?
It is an ongoing characteristic, apparently, in discussion with the wastewater plant. They also deal with issues with manganese, high levels of manganese and iron in the Animus River supply. That is just a pretty typical characteristic of Animus Water. I don't know if that's historically true, back, you know, 24 years ago, but it certainly is currently the case.
Just thank you very much. Very well done.
Thank you. A good team effort. The water plant really responded effectively.
Mayor Pro Tim Noseworthy, you're on mute. Barbara, yeah?
I just wanted to thank you, Allison, for your work and for your team's work. I mean, everyone from water, sewer, the streets, the swamps are responding on the weekends, they're responding in real time at late hours. And I want to recognize the huge effort that your whole Public Works Department is putting in to take care of the very basic infrastructure that we depend upon, and sometimes we assume is always going to work. So thank you, and you keep us functioning. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll definitely pass that along to the team, and I'm sure they'll appreciate it. Thank you.
I was second. Mayor Pro Tim Noseworthy's comments. And also, I really appreciate how up to date you kept us with your updates on what was happening and how things were being repaired. So that's great. It makes it much easier for us to speak with our community and for people to know that we're on top of it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Council? All right. Thank you. We'll move on to 7.1.2, Community Development Department update on international building codes.
Yes, Mayor and Council, the Community Development Department has a presentation, just to give a quick update on the international building codes that will come for. We're actually calling for a public hearing, I believe, at this council meeting, a request for one, but we'll be coming to the council for consideration. We just wanted to provide an update, just so it wouldn't be the first time you hear about it as we go through. And I'll pass it to Kevin Hall, our Managing Director of Community Development.
Okay, with that intro, what I'm going to do is introduce you to Tony Medved. He's a member of our Community Development Team. He is our Building and Land Use Inspector. He's led this project. We do this about every three years. We felt like it was really good to give you a heads up before we brought it to council for consideration in a public hearing. So with that, Tony, I'm going to pass it off to you if you want to give them an overview of what's coming their way.
Thank you, Kevin, and good evening, everyone. I just have a brief PowerPoint presentation just to talk about some of the highlights of the code changes for the 2018 codes. During the February 15 public hearing, that agenda document will provide a staff report with further details of the proposed action. And can everyone see my screen here?
We can. Thank you, Tony.
Okay. So currently, the city of Durango is on the 2015 international codes, and we're proposing the 2018 codes. That would include the international building code for commercial projects, the international residential code, the international plumbing code, mechanical and fuel gas, that's all for commercial, the international fire code, and of course, the international energy conservation code. Some of the big changes or amendments that we're proposing, the next one here is in line with our diversity, equity, and inclusion goals. Language from the 2021 IPC, which is the international plumbing code, we're going to be taking that into the 2018. And basically, that is for new single-user restrooms. This shall be identified as being available to persons of, to all persons regardless of sex, so that they're not labeled, you know, according male, female. Like I said, it aligns with the strategic plan of the city of Durango. One of the next big things is for the fire code. The Durango Fire Protection District will now require an operational permit for food trucks. Any that contain appliances that produce smoke and grease-laden vapors, this will help them track which ones they need to inspect to ensure that they're safe and operating correctly. For the 2018 International Energy Conservation Code, there's a few changes, and then a few just recommendations from our staff to help increase the energy efficiency and indoor air quality of the homes that we're building. The changes to the base code that improve the efficiency is window efficiency increased, the U factor from .32 to .30. Most manufacturers are already building their products to this new requirement, so we're already kind of seeing that in our area. The percentage of efficient lighting went from 75% of the lighting in the house to 90%. The energy rating index score was increased from 55 to 61, so the lower the score, the more efficient the house. But this allows for an easier target for builders to take a performance-based path to meet the energy code. The under slab insulation is now required under the entire heated slab, again, to reduce heat loss and improve efficiency of a boiler. And then there's just some improved language detailing the air sealing requirements. One of the big ones that we're looking to bring in from the 2021 energy code is about whole-house mechanical ventilation. The energy codes always talked about requiring ventilation of homes to provide, you know, good indoor air quality and maintain air movement and moisture control. But now, the requirement is a test to be done and a report to be provided to our department showing compliance with this to make sure that they're providing the proper ventilation of these homes. An amendment to the 18 that we're proposing will allow attached single-family residences of three or more units to be tested for an air leakage rate of four air changes per hour rather than the three for a typical single-family home. It was found to be difficult in smaller-volume houses to meet that three air changes an hour due to both the party wall in between the units and, like I said, just the smaller volume. So it'll make it a little bit easier for them to test out and meet the intent of the code of having a good sealed-up home. And then a lot of the other changes to the code, relocations of sections and clarity the language of the previous code. There's no real significant changes to the fuel gas, mechanical, building, or residential codes. And all the previous amendments made in our city ordinances to the 2015 code will remain in the 2018. And really, the next steps is just a request for the public hearing, and that further information be provided during the public hearing on the 15th. And that's it for me. Thank you for the time. If there's any questions, feel free.
Yes, if you'd like to stop sharing your screen, I believe Mayor Pro Tim Noseworthy had a question.
Tony, thank you for this presentation. I actually have two questions. Is there a more current code beyond the 2018 recommendations, like a 2021? That's my first question.
The 2021 did come out, and we have reviewed that, and the details of that review will be provided in the document on the 15th.
So I was wondering why we wouldn't just jump to that? What would be the ramifications, the cost to homeowners, to builders? And then my third issue was, how does this impact our sustainability goals and what our new director, Marty Poole, has to say about sustainability? I often know that there's a compromise here, but this is something that might impact us reaching our goals, and I was curious about your assessment of that.
Yeah, certainly. The increase in building costs was the main reason that we decided not to go forward with the 2021. There was some big changes that were made to the 2021 code that I think, you know, the model codes or the I codes come out every three years, and sometimes in that three years, they go back through and clean up some things that they may have put into the code. I have a feeling that they'll do that with some of the big leaps that they took for the energy code. And that was, I guess, like I said, the big reason that we looked at the 18 rather than the 21. And I did the cost comparisons and everything and provided all that in the document for the hearing for next week, or two weeks, I guess. And then for sustainability, you know, I had worked with Imogen before and, you know, looking forward to working with Marty. Some of the things we're talking about are for maybe new developments moving forward with preparing for electric, you know, photovoltaic systems on the roofs and electric vehicle charging stations within homes. So those are, our conversations are ongoing without going to fully adopt the green building code or anything of that nature.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Council? Thank you very much, Tony. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Tony.
Okay, on to agenda item number eight, which is the review of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is intended to allow the city council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member requests an item to be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under Agenda Item 9. Ms. Phillips, may we have a reading of the consent agenda, please?
Certainly. But Mayor, if I could, could I have a moment just to respond about the streaming on the video first?
Oh, yes, yes.
I did check it while y'all were in executive session. The streaming and the audio did take place on the study session. The streaming took place while the meeting was going on. And the audio is now on. It's also been uploaded. If somebody were to go to our website at durangogov.org and look at agendas and minutes, scroll down, find the meeting that you're looking for, you will see that it has the agenda, the packet, and then it's either going to tell you live stream, or it's going to say View Media. And so that's what you click on, and that's how you can hear the meeting. The meeting was over early, so it ended approximately 3:31. It was an hour and 16 minutes long. So if you tried to use the links for the Zoom meeting prior to or after 3:30, then they wouldn't have been working. So if you were looking at it at that time, that might have been the reason that their links weren't working. And if they go to approximately one hour and five minutes, that's when that item comes up, and it runs until one hour and 16 minutes.
Wonderful. Great information. Thank you very much, Amy. So people can find it on the View Media link on the Agendas and Meetings webpage.
So on to the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Item 8.1 through 8.4 are approval of minutes. 8.1, the minutes from the January 18, 2022 study session. 8.2, the minutes from the January 18, 2022 regular meeting. 8.3, the minutes from the January 18, 2022 special meeting. And 8.4, the minutes from the December 7, 2021 regular meeting. Items 8.5 through 8.6 are discussion and possible action items. 8.5 concerns the Mountain Trace Townhomes Building F and K as built final plat. 8.6 concerns resolution R 2022-6, accepting the Gage Apartment addition, annexation petition, and setting the public hearing and to consider the annexation and initial zoning for March 15, 2022. Items 8.7 through 8.10 are requests for public hearings with a proposed date of February 15, 2022. 8.7 is to consider an easement for Charter Communications, Inc. for the installation of an underground fiber optic line to service properties in the Avenida del Sol area. 8.8 is to consider an easement for La Plata Electric Association to service the new Animus High School. 8.9 is to consider a proposal for KB Durango for a preliminary plan amendment and site plan review to develop an apartment complex near the intersection of Wilson Gulch Drive and Three Springs Boulevard. And 8.10 is to consider the adoption of the 2018 international codes and associated amendments to the city code of ordinances.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Phillips.
If I may, just a clarification. 8.10 is a request for the public hearing, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so Amy introduces the public hearings as these four following are requests for public hearings, and I know you wanted to make it clear, so I appreciate that.
Absolutely. That's a big one. So just with the presentation coming on and involved with that, I just wanted to make sure it was clear to everyone that it wasn't, that was the presentation we're approving. So appreciate the opportunity just to triple-check and make sure people understand.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you, everyone. Councilors, are there any agenda items that anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? Counselor Bosmans?
I would like to remove Agenda Item 8.4.
Okay, anyone else? No? So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of Item 8.4.
移除第二
有讨论吗? 可以投票吗, 请投票
Mayor Pro Tim Noseworthy?
是
Counselor Yussaf?
是
Counselor Bosmans?
是
Counselor Beal?
是
Mayor Baxter?
Yes. Counselor Bosmans, you had a comment on 8.4.
Yes, I do. And I have a question for staff. Jose probably is the best one, or Amy even. I noticed these minutes from December 7, they were included during our prior agenda meeting on the initial agenda, and then they were removed from that agenda package before the meeting took place. And now for this meeting, I downloaded the agenda package yesterday, and the minutes of this meeting were not included in the agenda package. So I was preparing for this meeting, and one of the comments is that this topic was not included. But I thought I will check this morning if this, anything changed on the agenda package. And to my surprise, the agenda package this morning was including the minutes of that meeting. So this brings several questions to my mind. One is, why was it added at the last minute? And I personally didn't see any information that there was a change in the agenda package. And does it happen more often? Because I tend to download the agenda package a couple of days or more before the meeting. So that's a structural question. And the second one is, since it took a while for these minutes to be finalized, I was trying to figure what is the process for documenting minutes, and I'm going to go specifically to these minutes. Is it someone in the city staff that just does it independently? Or is there a review process to verify the minutes, clean it up, or some sort of rewrite process, make sure everything is in order? process, make sure everything is in order? And then just for these specific minutes, because it took a little bit longer, who would have seen these draft minutes before they were finalized and included in the package?
I will pass over to Amy Phillips, the city clerk. She's the one who, her department handles the minutes and have her explain kind of the process that it goes through. Amy?
The minutes for December the 7th, we, the minutes are done in-house, and we also have a few people that help us on a contract basis. And the December 7 minutes were one that we were working with a new person to do minutes. And it, it took me, I needed to clean them up and go back and listen to them. So we originally had them on the meeting for the last meeting, and then I took them off and I worked on them as well as the minutes that we had for the 18th. It just takes quite a bit of time to do the minutes, and especially when we, we have several meetings that we're doing at one time. So I apologize for the lateness. We are trying to find different contractors to help us with the minutes. I think that you will see we were, we will have a discussion regarding minutes at our next study session. But I apologize for the fact that they were late, and nobody, nobody reviews them except for our office.
I, I did not, curious, I really appreciate what you, what your team is doing there. I, it just, it popped up to my mind because it's, one part is how the process is, and I'm sorry to hear that staffing is an issue, and you can tell on the minutes that they were written a little bit different in style, so I, it makes perfect sense. I wonder if it's useful to send out emails if an agenda package changes, just so that people, because I assume that not many people noticed that these minutes were not part of the package that was from yesterday, because I have recently, yesterday and today, I just the ones I downloaded. If it's beneficial to have that as a standard procedure, that if there's a change to the agenda package, to have an email go out to council or to have it on the website stating revised agenda package, so that people, not only council, but anybody who participates and wants to see these meetings is aware of them. And that's maybe another topic. With that having, having said that, I move to approve the approval of minutes from December 7.
Second.
Is there any discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Counselor Yussa?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Nowsworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we are on to item 11, public hearings. We have no legislative and policy-related hearings, but we do have one quasi-judicial hearing, which says continue to February 15, 2022, a public hearing to consider the River Roost Minor Preliminary Subdivision. Mr. Nelson, do we need to vote to actually continue that?
Yes.
All right. May I, may I have a motion to do so?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Mayor, Mayor Protim Nowsworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Yussa?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes. So now we are on to 12, introduction of ordinances. 12.1, an ordinance amending Chapter 27 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango Land Use and Development Code by the Amendment of Chapter 2 and 7 related to commercial use of required onsite parking and definitions and declaring ineffective date. Mr. Nelson?
Yes, this is ordinance O 2022-2. This ordinance to amend the land use code was prepared at the direction of council following a public hearing at the last council meeting. So this item is on the agenda for first reading of this ordinance tonight.
Thank you. Do we need to read it? Or do we just need to make a motion? You're on mute, Dirk.
All right. Yes, this is a motion to approve ordinance O 22-2.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the document 2022, was that it? Sorry.
As 2.
Yeah, 22, yeah, 2022-2.
2022-2.
One second.
Is there any discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Counselor Yussa?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Nowsworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes. Now we're on to item 14, council reports and actions. Each council member is provided an opportunity to report on meetings recently attended and discuss topics not otherwise appearing on the agenda. Counselors, would anyone like to raise their hand to talk about anything? Counselor Bosmans?
Yeah, I'll take it. I'll take the first one here. There was a multimodal advisory board meeting on January 19. They discussed the periodic report, January reports, transportation, and an update from the Fort Lewis College representative. There was a presentation on the downtown next steps project overview. I think it also came for council. And the results for transit 2021 survey were in. And then there was the future discussion, the joint board meeting with the Parks and Recreation and National Lands set for tomorrow. And then the 11th of February is winter bike to work day, so multimodal, let's do it. And then there was the existing older business, 32nd Street Traffic Calming Project and the multimodal strategic vision for connectivity. That's all I had.
Counselor Bosmans, I was wondering, Commissioner Porter Norton mentioned the Southwest COG meeting that was held last week, and I believe you're the liaison to the COG. Do you have a report from that meeting?
I do as well. Maybe that should be part of the agenda, I guess. It is the, it was a COG meeting on January 27. This was about the cooperation between the COG and Region 9. There was a letter of agreement and discussion on the next steps. There will be another meeting. They just did a doodle poll on that. And then we have a discussion on updates on grants, various reports from staff and the different regions, including housing, broadband, transportation, and transit. And that was, that was it for the COG meeting.
Thank you very much. Commissioner, or Counselor Buell?
Okay, I had a few, so I'll try not to ramble too much. I had the Airport Commission on January 20. A few highlights, the airport is still subject to the federal mask order mandating wearing a face mask by all passengers and visitors inside the terminal through at least March 18. December 2021 passenger traffic finished strong at 109% of 2019 levels, making the seventh consecutive month with record traffic at DRO. Final numbers for 2021 passenger traffic was up 1.7% from 2019. But using the TSA screening numbers as reported nationwide, the recovery seen through December at DRO is outpacing nationwide passenger recovery by approximately 28%. Probably the most exciting thing at the Airport Commission meeting was, as I mentioned before, the airport formally initiated design of the planned terminal renovation and expansion project in September 2021. It's as a gateway and first impression to Durango and Southwest Colorado. We must provide an appropriately sized and modern infrastructure to support the growing demand for air service in our community, since passenger traffic has almost doubled, or more than doubled actually, over the past 20 years, and we're feeling the pressures of that growth. So the first milestone of the design process is the selection of a preferred concept, which we did. The design team worked collaboratively over the last four months with airport staff, airport tenants, and the Airport Commission. And then in a unanimous, two unanimous votes, we supported moving forward with the concept option number two. Some of the key features that people really liked while voting for option two was some sawtooth roof lines creating a lasting visual impact that mimic the mountainous terrain visible from DRO, some outdoor seating areas. They're hoping for Phase 1A construction to begin late of 2022 or early 2023. And then additionally, still the rehabilitation of the airport single runway is planned for September of 2022, and design is underway. As a reminder, the runway closure is scheduled for September 7 through September 16. Then I had the Creative Economy Commission on the 25th. So the story walk is up and running, and the first book is installed. This first book is all photos, but future ones with text will have Braille and Spanish translation included. We awarded our art maintenance contract, and with their assessment came a few pieces that are going to require a bit more than normal maintenance for clean and restoring. So that's just kind of like an FYI. The art location plan has been completed, and we anticipate the updated Art Master Plan should be complete by the end of March. So that's exciting to get those two pieces done. And then we had a big discussion on how entities would come forward to the CEC for lodgers' tax requests, as we had one entity come forward with a request. So staff is generating an application for entities to submit to the CEC for review before we kind of bring them in front of us to bring recommendations to council. So that is good movement there. And then.
Where is the story walk?
The library.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And then the last thing, and I could like ramble, this was, and I think, Kim, you were on this too, but I sat in for Barbara, because for the CAS meeting in January. And the focus was primarily on housing. And so just some like key takeaways really quick. Let's see here, CAS formed a housing task force in 2021, and they had their first meeting. They're focusing on some key items, a bill that could pass for lodging tax on affordable housing, staying up on the discussion of increasing modular production and opportunities to contribute to affordable housing, tax fees on Airbnbs, short-term rentals, increasing the AMI thresholds for workforce housing, which I thought that was interesting and kind of needed, and a real estate transfer tax for workforce housing. That one's kind of bottom of the list because it's like a three-step process with Tabor and everything. They're finalizing a legislative position statement focusing on available funds at the state level. After that, we heard from various counties on strategies and policies that they have recently implemented for short-term rentals. A lot of these stories are not super applicable, I don't think, to the city of Durango, because I feel like we were so forward-thinking in our short-term rental policies that a lot of these counties are struggling with things that we're not really struggling with. So that's kind of good on us for being ahead of the game there. There was some good movement by Glenwood in regulations and enforcement for getting licenses revoked if constant bad renters bear issues, unkept properties, et cetera, on STR licenses. So I thought that was interesting. There was a future of housing presentation by Yampa Valley Housing Authority at a Steamboat, and they talked about how housing's always been an issue there, but in recent years, it's really climbing up the income ladder and becoming a business problem in Steamboat. And so they've actually had a $30 million lay-in donation that has helped them really focus in on launching a collaborative work in the community to develop local housing on this land that's affordable, sustainable, and community-driven. And then the last piece was a bunch of stories from a bunch of different counties on how they're changing short-term rental incentives to long-term rentals, which was really interesting. And a lot of these were kind of pushed, like, it was kind of like emergency ordinances that they passed in order to get some of these short-term rentals turned over to long-term rentals for ski staff and whatnot. But they had, there was, you know, Crested Butte, Winter Park, some cash incentives, and just some different ideas and stuff. And I can send out the slideshow and the stuff to council, but it was super interesting, and lots of great kind of creative ideas there. Yeah, there you go. That was it for me.
Good synopsis. It was a very interesting meeting. I really enjoyed it.
Yeah.
Mayor Protim Nowsworthy?
First of all, huge thanks to Jessica and Kim for filling in for me. I appreciate you attending that. It was important topics, so thank you. I have two items. I attended the kind of policy meeting on COVID that takes place every Monday when we get the statistics and kind of the, the report from San Juan Basin Public Health. And two things, the Mercy did report that they are at surge capacity, which means that they're working beyond their normal capacity. And Mayor, you did raise a great question, which is, how does that compare with, you know, pre-COVID times? And so I will raise that and see if I can get that information. But the point is that they are at surge capacity, and anything we can do to help minimize the use of the hospital is appreciated. Anamis Surgical Hospital also reported that they've had some situations where their staff have been infected, but they are able to do, to do all of their normal procedures. They haven't had to stop that. They have said that they've had people showing up for surgeries, though, and testing positive for COVID on the day before or the day of surgery. So that does change some things on that regard. I also wanted to add that the N95 masks are available. I went and picked some up today at San Juan Basin Public Health. It's very easy. You go in, you have your mask on when you go in, and they have a bag right there. You can take your bag for one person, and it has five masks available. So I thought that was very useful. And I also wanted to report that two weeks ago, I applied for my home testing and had them in the mail in very short order. So I think that's great news as well. On CAS, I did want to say that a while ago, I had asked council how they felt about having the December of 2023, excuse me, the January of 2023 meeting take place in Durango, and you were all supportive of that. But with, in January this year, Steamboat was supposed to host that meeting, and it was canceled for a variety, mostly COVID reasons. So they will then be hosting in 2023 in January, which means that there's a slot available in either the spring, or excuse me, either the summer or the fall meeting, which would be possibly a new council. And so I want, but we have to get in the queue now if we want to actually take that. So the August opportunity would be the fourth week in August, and it would be Thursday, excuse me, Thursday afternoon, evening, and Friday morning. Or there's a slot in October of 2023, which would be the third week in October. And again, it would be Thursday afternoon, evening, and Friday morning. And I see this as a wonderful opportunity to showcase Durango, to bring many people to our community, spending money. But I needed a support, a sense of support from council to go forward so that we are on the queue and listed as hosting this meeting in 2023. So I wanted to get a sense from council of your direction for me.
Barbara, I think that's a great idea, but I, the other three counselors who will still be on council for sure, not that you and I won't be, but I probably would hear from them as to what their preference was.
I would absolutely support it. I think it would be great, and we could always bring Dean back in, who was the president of CAS, I think he was at last year. So that would be fun. I think it'd be great.
I do want to, I do want to add that when we host, from my experience at the others, it's an all-hands-on-deck, so counselors are there, they're presenting, it requires staff time. It's a commitment, but I think it's a great opportunity. The question is, do you prefer, and both slides are open right now, do you prefer end of September, just before school starts, or would you prefer the third week in October, which would probably coincide with a city council meeting on a Tuesday, and then there would be a Thursday and Friday meetings?
I think we definitely need to hear from staff and get their staff, staff input on this as a result of the staff time that it will require as well. But I would, I, me personally, I think the October date would be best as far as people's schedules, who knows for summer, travel, family, whatever it might hold, and October seems to be a little bit more of the routine scheduling time, so that So that would seem best for me.
I'm indifferent on the date, whatever staff thinks, I will support. But I think it's a great idea, yes.
I also support the idea and I think Melissa, same, October is maybe better just because it's the most quiet season period, so get some people back in Durango.
So, so if I could hear back from Jose, from staff's perspective, if something's better than October, I'd really like to nail this down so we are confirmed for hosting that event.
From a staff perspective, I don't think it, because we have so much notice, it really doesn't, whichever date works better for the council, the staff will make happen.
So I'll write tomorrow with a request for the October meeting of 2023. Thank you.
Councillor Yussa?
So just I wanted to do a quick update on the library advisory board meeting that I attended a couple of weeks ago now. I gave an update at our joint meeting, but all the board members were not, or the city council members were not in attendance. So I just wanted to let you know, quick update. We got an update on the feasibility study and outreach to the community regarding a library district. They did send out an RFP, that RFP only had, and that was for helping us determine the cost of a library district. That RFP only had one, one, one company respond. It was a small company out of Ketchum, Idaho. 12 larger organizations and company, yeah, companies throughout the country looked at it, but only one responded. They're still going to go through the normal process right now, set up a panel of five members who will review that RFP and make a decision shortly. They will either decide to use that company or they will rebid and/or they will look to direct source this by selecting various financial companies that they might reach out to directly, even local ones. So that's where they are with that. And then once they do that process, then they will also start moving forward with polling the community to gauge interest in the library district. So in general and overall, in conclusion about that update, they're still looking. They're still probably three to five months out for all of that work is where we are. They also talked about the possibility of an electric sign, which is interesting. And they have been talking with staff about that. I just wanted to update council on that. City codes would have to be reviewed and variants would have to be issued. But there's been some interest and some community, you know, in dialogue around it. Some communities have found it to be a good way to keep their community informed on events and news relevant to the community and relevant to what's going on at the libraries, such as, you know, game nights, free masks, events, book sales, things like that. These are all weather signs. They run from about $6,000 to $12,000. So it's just kind of some dialogue that they're having there at the library advisory board and in conjunction with city staff. They also talked about the possibility of looking into a bookmobile, which is interesting. It's kind of a county-wide initiative. They're discussing funding and how we would carry the heavy load of the vehicle, the drivers and the insurance. They have been, you know, popular in some communities, we recognize. And it was discussed that, of course, in the city, we are not rural. But we do have three springs and the bookmobile could go north. And it is pretty amazing, it could go to schools. It's pretty amazing, also marketing, has some marketing value. So they're just kind of beginning to have conversations about that too. And that's it.
Thank you very much. So the one thing that I did want to talk about, about the regional housing authorities, so the RHA, is that, as you know, a couple of months ago, we did a request for qualifications for preferably a firm and a group of experts to lead the RHA and create its structure and get funding and get projects on the ground. And so we received a application from a combined firm, Project Moxie with General Lopez and Capelli Consulting with Jonathan Capelli. Kevin and Marsha Porter Norton and I interviewed them last, maybe it was two weeks ago. They have great skills. They have all the assets that we'd like them to bring to us. They have a really good plan for how to move forward. And the RHA will be discussing whether or not to award that contract. Not, so we have a meeting this Thursday, but it would, we will probably call a special meeting in a couple of weeks to make that decision. So this Thursday, there'll be an informational meeting to update the board. And then we would have another meeting in order to actually make a decision about whether or not to award the contract. So we're very excited about it and it's a big progress forward and will be great movement for the RHA. Any other comments or additions from Councillor Bosman?
Yeah, I had two specific questions. One for you on the RHA. You mentioned there was actual projects and planned with projects. What are the projects or is it more early stages of organization?
So there's a couple of things that'll happen. One is as a structure of how we move forward and the timing of it. So there aren't any actual projects developed yet. But it'll be the structure of how we would do that and how we will make it happen, how we will bring funding into the group, what avenues for funding there are. Project Moxie is working with the Economic Alliance right now to produce a report that's like a game plan for the most efficient and effective way to use funding that's available to create housing. And from that project, from that study, which should be done in March, they'll be able to take that information and apply it to the RHA. So it's pretty exciting in that sense. Additionally, then they see the possibility of by June-ish time, actually creating partnerships, public-private partnerships to start developing what a housing project would look like and where it would be.
Thank you. The other question I had is on the emails we've seen, and I'm not sure who to address this, but on the new, new logo for Durango. I, I just wanted to see where, where did that come from and where are we going with that? Because I have heard from various people that, why are we spending money on a new logo? Is, is, is it Jessica, maybe?
No. So it has actually been in the council's strategic plan and was also one of the previous councils. So the previous council not only had it in their strategic plan, but also in their goals and objectives. So it is currently in our strategic plan at this point in time as an initiative for staff to embark upon.
And is in the strategic plan, we specifically say we need to come up with a new logo for Durango?
That's. An iconic, an iconic brand. I don't remember the exact sentence, but an iconic brand that represents the city of Durango. So a logo is part of that branding exercise.
Mayor, if I may.
Summarizing this in an email, Olivier? And so if you want, there's an email from Tom that was sent out to all of city council after Melissa requested information on this. And he explains it really well and kind of like the process they're going through and why they're going through it and how it aligns with our strategic plan.
Thank you, Jessica. I saw the email, but I wanted to see at the council level where this came from. And to me, it's maybe worth discussing at a certain point in the future.
I'm sure we will at our strategic plan meeting.
I would just, I would just like to comment that that did come back from the 2019 retreat with a previous council and we build upon, in some cases, always an opportunity to review, but we build upon the work of previous councils. So I see this as a continuation of work that was done in 2019. Again, there's an opportunity to discuss at the strategic planning session in February. But it is in the plan and has been in the plan.
Jose, I know you were trying to say something earlier. Did you want to add to that?
No, Councillor Buell had it. We did have an email that Thompson out to the entire council that explained the process and the reasoning behind it.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Wonderful, thank you very much and I adjourn the meeting.